Well, good morning, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We start with an invocation, which we observe by a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Dead.
Here.
Willis.
Here.
All present.
And we've got some minutes.
Madam Mayor, I ask, uh, I move approval of the minutes for Budget Workshop on June 24th, 2025, and the regular day meeting, June 24th, 2025.
Second.
Madam Mayor, I'll be abstaining. I wasn't here.
Thank you. Clerk?
Nash.
Yes.
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And we're gonna jump ahead to the consent agenda, so we've got some staff that can head home after some public works items before we go into special business.
Madam Mayor, I'd ask that we remove item, we defer item number 19 from the consent agenda. Actually, I'd ask that we take number 19 off the consent agenda for separate consideration.
Are you, you're wanting to just consider it separately, not defer it?
This is when we discuss with some additional questions that Amanda was able to get answered right before we came in.
And then item number one.
So wait, can we start the, can we start the motion over?
Yeah. Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd ask that we take item number one off the consent agenda for separate consideration.
The expenses?
No, the resolution, Resolution 281-25.
I've never noticed how many ones are in the consent agenda. So item E1, okay. All right, so we are considering the consent agenda without E1.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the remaining, uh, consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second discussion? I'll flag a couple of things on here. Resolution 325, um, actually is the resolution that allows us to accept front funds for the CIPRA award from the US Department of Treasury. This is a pay-for-success, um, grant that we will be, um, as we demonstrate that we are saving money for hospitals and the county and the city when we provide wraparound services to get folks that were formerly homeless on the road to self-sufficiency and housing with services. Um, the Treasury will reimburse the fund for that savings amount to allow us to continue to serve folks. So this is the first step in that, which I think is, um, pretty exciting and, um, really important for our housing work in the long run. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Nash.
Yes.
Dead.
Yep.
Willis.
No.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Five in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
And then we have.
Uh, Resolution 281-25, item E1. Um, Councilmember Corliss, it was my understanding, uh, that we were gonna defer this a week and that we may not have the people here to answer the questions that you wanted answered. Uh, so are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
Madam Mayor, I move deferral of item number E1, Resolution 281-25, uh, till our next meeting.
Second.
All right, clerk?
Nash.
Yes.
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, and now we will pick up special business. Thanks, team. Have a good night. So I'm going, is it, Amy, am I inviting you up for the presentation? Wonderful, Jim Valentine, Chris Booker. Oh, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Good evening.
Evening.
Mayor and members of City Council. We're excited to be here tonight. Uh, my name is Jim Valentine. I'm here with my wife, Chris, Chris, and we are Just Serve specialists in Southeast Boise. We also have Chris Booker here and his wife Bryn, our area Just Serve specialist. And Chris is here with me, and then some other people that are also here representing Just Serve. So, um, let me give you a little bit of background about Just Serve. It's a, uh, a free app and website that began in 2012, and it operates through volunteers, Just Serve volunteers all over the, all over the world. In fact, in 17 countries, uh, it operates, connecting volunteers with service opportunities and helping people connect through building and building and working together. We're incredibly proud of the volunteer spirit here in Boise and, and what it's done for the city. And right now, there are over 150, uh, faith, nonprofit, community, and government, uh, organizations that are on the Just Serve website. And you can, uh, you have the opportunity, if you want to look to volunteer, right now, you can go on and look, there's like 81 projects for Boise alone that people can look on and to, uh, to serve and to volunteer with. So we are happy to do that. And when someone pushes a button to volunteer, they're not only helping out, but they're building a good, strong community. So thank you.
Yes, so thank you so much for having us, uh, this evening. We know that volunteerism is deeply woven into the fabric of Boise's identity. You actively encourage residents to contribute to the causes and programs that help this city thrive. It's that commitment to service and community impact that we want to celebrate tonight by presenting you with not one, but two significant accolades. A Just Serve City Award and a Just Serve Global City Award. There are currently 58 designated Just Serve cities across the United States, Canada, Chile, Argentina, Hungary, and Boise now is proudly one of them. But you've gotten above and beyond by earning the Global Just Serve City Award. The distinction celebrates cities that demonstrate truly exceptional dedication to volunteerism and community engagement. In fact, Boise is one of just 10 global Just Serve city awardees worldwide, and this November, Just Serve will further recognize your commitment to service at the National League of Cities City Summit in Salt Lake. So it's an honor to present the city of Boise with this well-deserved Just Serve Award. And congratulations to you, Mayor, uh, the Boise City Council, Community Volunteer Coordinator Jerry Pugh, and the entire city of Boise for setting such a remarkable standard of volunteerism in our community. Thank you for your inspiring dedication to service. And now we'd love to get a photo, uh, with you with the Just Serve certificate, which is here that we like to present, and perhaps we could maybe grab the banner and just kind of stand down here in front and take a quick picture with that, would be okay?
Yes, it would be. Thank you so much. This is truly an honor. Appreciate it, and it's wonderful to have you all here tonight.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I just, I was really interested in this award after I found out Meridian got it first.
Yeah, but now we're global.
Okay, all right.
It's just a timing issue.
Madam Mayor, another comment, I just like to delay photo, you know, group photos a little, as long as possible, but, um, I want to thank you for coming out. This is really exciting, I will say. Um, being at City Summit last year, when Boise was one of the cities of communities recognized alongside Meridian and Nampa, I know Caldwell's mayor was there and was, he's working real hard to get there too. Um, but really appreciate the opportunity to, to be able to talk about ways that communities can support each other. It was great to see so many local electeds from all over the country in that audience, hearing that panel, asking questions about how to engage. And Just Serve is just a fantastic tool to be able to do that. Any organization can get on there, post things, but I think the thing I love beyond the normal kind of event volunteerism is the asynchronous stuff that you can do, uh, like sewing pillowcases for teens at a local behavior health hospital or blank, in blankets or providing donations. Um, I think Faces of Hope is looking for clothing for teen girls, things like that. And so just thank you so much for all the effort that you do to help cultivate this and provide opportunities for us to, to lift where we stand.
Thank you very much. All right.
All right, we are back. Move on now to ordinances. Looks like we have a couple on second reading.
Madam Mayor, I see unanimous consent that all ordinances on second reading be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
ORD-22-25, an ordinance meanting Boise City Code Title V, Chapter 12, Section 49, to amend phone protection requirements and provide an effective date. ORD-23-25, an ordinance, DAR 24-15, for property located at 851 East Bramir Road, annexing 0.744 acres of certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Boise City, establishing and determining the land use classification of said 0.744 acres as R-1B residential suburban, establishing and determining the sensitive lands overly destructive said acres, sending forth a reasoned statement in support of such annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory, providing that copies of this ordinance should be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Reporter, and Idaho State Tax Commission, providing that a copy of said legal description and map of said annexed lands and territory be reported with the Ada County Reporter and filed with the Ada County Assessor and Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing effective date.
Okay, third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD-20-25 and ORD-21-25 be dispensed with, and the record reflect that they have been read the third time in full.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, clerk?
Nash.
Yes.
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-20-25, an ordinance meanting Boise City Code Title V, Chapter 2, General Offenses, creating the offense of control of speed and renumbering the subsequent provision accordingly and providing effective date. ORD-21-25, an ordinance meanting Boise City Code Title V, Chapter 7, Noise Control, amending exceptions to provide an exception for First Amendment protected activities and providing effective date.
And we have one on first, second, third.
Madam Mayor, I'm still gonna finish the one on third.
Oh, sorry about that.
I move that ORD-20-25 and ORD-21-25 be approved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, clerk?
I think there might be some discussion, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, like, since we're positive, Madam Mayor, um, for ordinance 20-25, I don't know that this is like the end-all-be-all solution to problem with speeding on the green belt. I think it's a good step on getting everybody on the same page. But I also know that there was a lot of staff from a lot of different agencies working together on this one, and that collaboration between Garden City, Ada County, City of Boise, um, certainly is a great thing, and then we want to continue to work on. So any of the staff, I don't think there's anybody here, but if they're watching that we're working on this, uh, thank you for that collaborative effort from all three agencies, and I think we'll need to continue working together to address, you know, some of the issues that we see there. So thank you for the hard work.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to echo, um, what Councilmember Hallie Burton said. This is something that we get a lot of mail on about speeding on the green belt. People are concerned. It's an, it's an amazing amenity that we have, but obviously we want, want people to be safe. And so I agree, this may not be the end-all-be-all, but it's a step in the right direction, and I'm really looking forward to seeing how this progresses and if this helps the problem, and then we can reevaluate and continue to address it. So I'll be voting in favor.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Just a comment from me, this continued discussion, uh, it is something that we hear a lot about, um, in terms of people being able to enjoy the recreational pathways and trails that we have. Um, and I would just, you know, this is just one more affirmation of the importance of being responsible users of our green belt, um, and our, and our pathways. I believe that, you know, when we talk about control of speed, there are some particular parts of the green belt that just make sense to dismount, you know, whether it's intersections at bridges and tunnels. Um, I just really hope that our, our neighbors can try to think of those ways that they might provide an abundance of caution. Uh, for a lot of users, think about your grandparents using the green belt, right? And, and how fast at all if you'd want to ride around them. So, um, I think this is an important additional step, and I hope to, that it helps, um, users be able to do so more safely.
All right, clerk?
Nash.
Yes.
Dead.
Yep.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And now for second, third.
Madam Mayor, I move that all rules of the council interfering with the immediate consideration of ORD-27-25 be suspended, that the portions of Idaho Code 50-902 requiring an ordinance to be read on three different days, twice by title and once in full be dispensed with, that the record show it has been read third time in full.
Second.
Clerk?
Nash.
Yes.
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-27-25, an ordinance, DAR 24-12, for property located at 2272 South Five Mile Road, amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from R-1B residential suburban to R-1Z residential traditional, sending forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing effective date.
Madam Mayor, I move that ORD-27-25 be approved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, clerk?
Nash.
Yes.
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, so now we just have subdivisions tonight. These are pretty straightforward. I do have one person, Michael Johnson, that signed up for that you're neither opposed nor in favor. Okay, um, for, let's see, the joyful sub, the second one. So we're, we'll, um, we're gonna take Shields Avenue subdivision first. Um, I've got Ella Passy for the land group as the app. Right, okay, all right, Lacey, great. And then all, we don't expect the Neighborhood Association to be here? Is that the case? Anybody from the public here for this one? All righty, Lacey, I'll see if you agree with the terms and conditions of the staff report, and if so, we can move through this quickly. Great. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you is SUB 2527. This is a preliminary plat for a residential subdivision comprised of five buildable lots and one common lot on 0.77 acres, located at 10473 West Shields Avenue in an R1C zone. The applicant proposes to retain the existing home on Lot 4 and create four additional buildable lots. As proposed, all lots meet the dimensional standards of the R1C zone. Uh, Shields Avenue is unapproved and will require installation of curb gutter and detached sidewalk. Uh, the existing home on Lot 4 will maintain an individual driveway, whereas the four proposed lots will take access off of the common drive. The applicant is proposing to install a pedestrian connection along the west side of the common drive, as well as a pathway along the Spoils Bank Canal, and a condition of approval requires an additional pedestrian connection on the south side of the common drive. As conditioned, the proposed subdivision meets all standards and requirements of the Development Code, and in conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, are you in agreement with terms and conditions of the staff report? I'm getting a nod for the record, a yes, thank you. I want to confirm that nobody is here for this. All right, I'll take a motion. You're here for the next one, unless, unless you, you sign up on the wrong one. Did you want to talk about this one at Shields or? Okay, that's right. But I want to make sure, like, you, you did intend to talk about the joyful subdivision on Curtis Road? Great, okay.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of SUB 24-27, a preliminary plat for residential subdivision, com, uh, comprised of five buildable lots and one common lot on 0.77 acres located at 10473 West Shields Avenue in an R1C zone, subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second discussion?
Madam Mayor, um, just a couple of things. This is about a block away from the house that I grew up in, so this is my, my old stomping ground and neighborhood. I know it very, very well. Um, just want to thank the developer for the work on this one. I think that we always get excited to see, um, additional use of land while also preserving the existing house. That's one of our, you know, goals that we have in the comprehensive plan, the extra connectivity with the sidewalks. I also understand that the sidewalks don't necessarily connect to anything yet, um, but as we see these types of developments, we know that we'll build those sidewalks out even more. And then especially for the work there on the Spoils Bank Canal, that's one of our kind of key pathway areas that we've identified in Northwest Boise, and this is a great, uh, little stretch that's gonna connect to future stretches. And so your willingness to work with us, and thank you for staff for the work with them and getting all these things on there. So, thank you.
All right, clerk?
Nash.
Yes.
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks so much. Okay, we will now move into joyful, we'll now move into the joyful subdivision. We'll first hear from staff, and then is the Neighborhood Association here? We don't expect that to be the case. All right? And then I'll hear from you, Michael. Uh, well, first, we'll ask, before you actually, we'll hear from the applicant. Who's the applicant for this one? Is the applicant online?
Madam Mayor, the applicant is online.
Okay, great. Um, and it is Caleb, is it Caleb with this tonight? Wonderful, Caleb, after, uh, the city presents, I'll have you present, and then we'll hear from Mr. Johnson. Right, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, um, first City Council hearing, my name is Madison Lockhorn, and I'm an associate planner with planning and zoning. Um, the item before you is a preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of 13 buildable lots with one common lot on 4.37 acres located at 2311 South Curtis Road in the R2 residential compact with airport influence overlay zone. In 2020, under case files SUB 20-00011, the site received preliminary and final plat approval for a subdivision with 13 buildable lots and one common lot. However, that application expired in 2022. The proposed preliminary plat before you today is similar to the request that was approved before. This property is within the R2 zone and is located in Airport Influence Area B1. As detailed in the project report, the subdivision complies with the R2 zone. The applicant is proposing a public road which will connect Janine Street with Curtis Road. Detached five-foot-wide sidewalk was installed, is installed along Joyful Street with the previous approval, and the applicant will be required to install street trees within the eight-foot landscape buffer. Along Janine and Curtis will be five-foot-wide attached sidewalk. Agency comment was received from the Boise Airport with no objection um, to the proposed project. The Boise Airport will require an navigation easement to be recorded on the property. No other agency comments were received in opposition of the proposed project. In conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the preliminary plat, and I will stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks so much for being here tonight and presenting. Congratulations. Um, I have one question. I believe it's in the ACHD comments on this, but I don't see it on the map that there were, um, conditions on roadway to be approved along Boone Street?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, did you say Boone, B-O-O and E?
Yeah, if you go, you have one more map, it was before.
Okay, right at the, um, where it turns, uh, goes on, along Curtis South in that area.
Yeah, that's right.
And, Madam Mayor, councilmember, um, could you please repeat your question?
Yes, my question is, is it in the ACHD report that there are to be improvements, um, along the small section on Boone Street? I'm gonna take a look and see if I can find that as well.
In the packet, I see on page 65, um, um, Madam Mayor, councilmember, um, based on the ACHD comment, it appears that they are requiring it to tie into the existing improvements along Boone.
Along Boone Street, okay, correct, okay. Great. Um, Madam, Madam Mayor, uh, just another question on this. This one is kind of a unique, um, um, development, part of this development, um, the roadway for like Joyful Street is already in, um, but not completed. Um, and I'm wondering if, I know ACHD had comments on that, but I don't believe they've actually came out and inspected for this particular one. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, um, I mean, we'll refer that to the applicant.
Yeah, the applicant.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Answer these questions.
Great.
But they will be required to get another permit with ACHD.
Okay.
This new subdivision.
Perfect. Okay, no more questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Madison. Um, Caleb? If you're on, if you're with us.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Um, will you please answer the, the councilmember's question first before starting your presentation, if you're able to?
Uh, yes, uh, yeah, the, the sidewalk is, will tie into the, uh, uh, existing sidewalk at, at, at Boone. Um, it, it'll transition from five foot to four foot due to a sidewalk, or due to a fence, uh, that's, that's currently there for the existing residence, uh, that's not part of the subdivision. Um, in regards to ACHD, uh, yes, we currently have, uh, uh, we, we had plans in for a review, um, for the curb gutter sidewalk along Curtis. Those were approved like last week, I believe, and, uh, and, yeah, they, they will commence, uh, commence construction on the. commence construction on the curb gutter sidewalk shortly. But yeah, that that will be under A C H D permit. But yeah, plans have been reviewed and approved by A C H D for that already.
Madam Mayor, just to follow up, were the the plans that were reviewed, have they been on site to look at the roadway? And is it just a partial finished roadway? For Joyful Street?
Was that a question for me?
Yes. Sorry.
All these questions are for you, Caleb, now.
Okay, sounds good. They they have not been on site to inspect yet as as they have have not started the work. We did do a field meet as like a like a pre-construction meeting in January to discuss prior to the plans. You know, prior to the plans being prepared, I I don't think they've they've been on site since. But yeah, when when construction commences, they will be on site to inspect, yes.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just some clarifying questions. I'm trying to remember this application because I I feel like I vaguely remember it from from twenty twenty. And I think that maybe it looks like there have been some improvements that have been done. So I'm trying to figure out, did y'all get started on the project with like the streetscape and then didn't begin the development? Where where was the holdup on this one?
Yeah, they they started construction and the the curb gutter sidewalk along Joyful Street is installed. And the 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 curb gutter sidewalk along Curtis Road was partially installed. That's actually going to be removed and 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 replaced with with like a new design per the per the plans I just submitted. As far as the holdup on the under the last submittal, that I'm not sure of. I was not involved in the project at that point.
Great, that that actually makes sense now because I think that some of the comments that maybe we had gotten or that we'd heard in emails had to do with they saw some of the the sidewalk coming in, but not all of the sidewalk. And so maybe there was some fear that those last sections of sidewalk, that connection over to Boone weren't going to go in. Sounds like you've already done some of the work in creating some of those separated sidewalks. And then this, as this gets developed, the ones that are part of the plan that are incomplete now will be completed. So I think that answers my question.
Yeah, that that that's correct. And yeah, the the existing sidewalk ties into Boone. And then along Curtis, the sidewalk for the subdivision will also continue north and connect with existing sidewalk to the north.
Perfect.
Still on Curtis Road, but yeah.
Madam Mayor, council member, just a clarification. This is a new developer from the previous subdivision as well.
Right, yeah, I want to, I think that for the community at large, we should be clear about that, that it wasn't finished, it was paused, they they didn't finish it. Now somebody has bought it and is proposing to complete it all.
Madam Mayor, council member, correct.
Great. All right. Michael, come on up.
Hi, there. Your honor, city council, I haven't done this for years, and I apologize. I didn't put a tie on, and I don't have pants on.
Just for the record, you've got some shorts on. People can't see, but you do have shorts on.
The the lot where this is at is the old Terrell Plumbing Lot. And I've lived on Target now there for forty five years, and my whole neighborhood comes to me thinking I know what I'm doing. And because I spent many times in a death like this. But we're not against it. We're, you know, fine. It's been a nightmare for the neighborhood.
That with just the whole process.
It's been three different developers, promises were made, and then nothing happened. Six of us owners put a third of our money in to put a side obscuring fence up because we were told the city forgot to put a side obscuring fence up when the plot was originally okay. I don't know. I've never confirmed all that, but we just knew that if we didn't do something. So six of us went in together, and that developer went along with it. We pay a third. And the, I guess the biggest concern we have is if you go out my backyard and all six of those houses, here's here's the level of our property. The property of this development is up here. And I've talked to the city staff a number of times, and that's our concern is water runs downhill. And it's just been torn up and a mess for two years. And we understand part of what they, Highway District told us, the road that was put in there doesn't meet code. And that the sewer pipes are wrong, and you hear bits and pieces, but we were able to confirm a lot of that. And I'm just glad I'm not the developer of it. But our our main thing is the level. Because right now, it's so obvious. There's such a big difference in elevation. And, you know, the other only difference is is it's a it's a fire hazard right now. The weeds are up four or five feet. Three of us stood out in our backyard with hoses for the Fourth of July. We've talked to different people, I talked to the party department. Anyway, so I appreciate you taking the time to hear me. The the neighbors all come to me thinking I know what I'm doing. So I'm kind of unofficially representing us all.
Well, thanks for coming and for sharing the concerns. When the applicant gives his final comments, I'll he's welcome to address any of that if it seems appropriate. I would say that, yes, I mean, it's been stuck in limbo, right? Because there's an application developer couldn't pull it off. With this, with this, with this action tonight, this new developer, in theory, should pull it off, and then who have neighbors instead of a whole bunch of high grass.
And I do want to compliment the city staff for putting up with me calling every six months.
Oh, well, thank you for that.
And and one of them, I I can't remember, it was, maybe it was you, called and said, hey, there's a hearing at this, because that was the complaint that the whole neighborhood had is nobody told us anything. And nobody was against it. It just, would somebody please? And Curtis Road and Councilman Kathy was out there. It was a disaster. It still is. And the owner of the property finally filled it in so we could get out of his driveway. So anyway, I'll shut up very much.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Michael, actually.
Sure.
Michael.
You're back. Come on up.
Sorry, I I've got a question for you. You talked about the grade difference. So can you just estimate? You know, how like in inches or feet, what that grade difference is? And then is that just resting up against the fence that you installed or?
When the fence goes down, the fence level is.
Michael, were you talking to the mic?
The the fence is level, but from the other side of the fence, it goes up like this, and then it goes further up. And I'd never seen a subdivision designed with the sidewalks in the curb are like the north end. But it's a different different subdivision there. But it's it's quite a, the whole, the whole development is quite a bit higher.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you. Is anybody here to testify on this? All right, I'll have the applicant jump back on. Caleb, if you have any closing remarks you'd like to make, you're welcome to now.
Yeah, that sounds good. In regards to the grade of the subdivision, I know the the curb gutter sidewalk along that was installed along Curtis Road was too high. That that's part of the, that was part of the design change that was requested by A C H D. So the the along Curtis Road, the curb gutter sidewalk is that's installed now is going to be lowered. So runoff from the Joyful Street will will be within the gutter and down Curtis Road. As far as the the grade of the law, that that's not something I'm familiar with. As that work was already done and 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 yeah, I I don't really have anything to say about that. But I do know that the the road along Curtis Road, the curb gutter sidewalk that's installed now will be lowered. I don't have any more to add than that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I think that there are some code requirements that require you to mow your grasses down. And so I I know that sometimes when you do a development like this, you sort of inherit some of the problems of a previous, you know, owner. But, you know, it is summertime, and it's hot outside. I still have neighbors that are lighting off fireworks, even though it's past the Fourth of July, and I'm sure the kids will have some for a while longer. So I think if construction doesn't begin there soon, just asking you that or telling you that it'd be great to have you get down there and cut down the some of that tall grass for the fire hazard issues, and that way we don't have to do a code compliance, you know, sort of issue.
Madam Mayor. Caleb, thank you so much for, it it's really nice to know that we have a developer who's picking this up because it has been a limbo, and thank you so much for for taking on this subdivision that's kind of in the middle. The interesting part is along Curtis Road, there's a house authority there, which we normally don't see with a development to make improvements in front of a home that's already existing. But that home, just to let you know, under the prior one, it didn't get, the curb gutter and sidewalk didn't get complete, only the forms were there, and the forms were left in for about six months. And then they eventually just came out and just ripped out the forms. So I guess the ask and probably maybe a condition is that when you look at this development is that we consider that improvement on Curtis Road to be a priority for that homeowner.
Madam Mayor.
Do you have a question?
Not for the applicant, but for staff.
Great.
Do you like me go?
Yeah.
Yeah, just kind of to that, to that issue of grading, you know, I could foresee a situation in the future where you have fully landscaped lots, sprinklers running, and now you have drainage that are going into the the properties adjacent to them. I'm sure there's many parts of our city where you have lots like this that are that are kind of lined up along a grade in in that manner. Is there anything, kind of any kind of requirements or things that we we see on a property like this, maybe to help handle that drainage, whether it's like French drain, whether it's some sort of berm or or nature, something like that?
Madam Mayor, council members, grading and drainage permits will be needed for this subdivision as again, it's a new, we're looking at as a new one. So those will be reviewed again and addressed at that point.
Anything further? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move approval of subdivision twenty four dash zero 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 four preliminary plat for a residential subdivision comprised of thirteen buildable and one common lot on four point three seven acres located at twenty three eleven South Curtis Road and an R two slash A I dash O compact with airport influence overlay zone. With, great, as I say. I would say with a couple of conditions.
Please go ahead.
Yeah.
And pull back my second.
Thanks, Meredith. Madam Mayor, so one of these conditions, we'd like to see that, so the like to condition the property to ensure that the improvements along Curtis Road are of the first priority for the develop, for the developer before commencing any additional work on this project. So, to be clear, the applicant is to make the roadway and landscape improvements that's been recommended as part of this proposal from staff as provided in the report before commencing any additional work on the project.
Is there just one extra condition? You said, you said you have a couple.
Yeah, the second one is I'd like to see that the developer also coordinate the work with the schedule at two of the homeowners doing the improvement at two three oh seven North Curtis and five seven seven nine Boone Avenue. Those tie-ins are, like I said, are to the homeowners there. So it would be nice for the developer to reach out and make sure that that work is coordinated in conjunction with them.
Madam Mayor.
Not with them, but they're notified, and they're notified of the progress and the timing that's going to be when that when that construction in front of their homes is going to happen. So just to just to clarify, sorry, that was really rambly. Let me take the stab at that again. Is to notify the homeowners at those two addresses before the work commences in front of their properties.
Madam Mayor, if I can maybe just take a stab at rewording that, maybe there's a condition to make sure that that all notification requirements can are done within the neighborhood that are required. So I think that, well, that's not even a condition. They have to do that.
Yeah, they have to do that.
Yeah, what what I'm trying to get at maybe is that there's two homeowners.
I'm going to stop this for a second. I'm going to take a second, and then I'll have you explain, and you can make any changes if you need to, but I need a second for discussion.
Second.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
So Madam Mayor, so on this second condition is just to ensure, because this is, because the project has two homes, single family homes with residents living in them at two three oh seven North Curtis and five seven seven nine Boone Avenue, that work needs to be done in front of their properties, that the developer is is notifying and coordinating that activity that's going to happen in front of their house with those homeowners.
Makes sense. All right, would you like to have any further discussion on your motion?
No, I I just want to thank the developer again for this, picking up this project. It's a great area town. There's lots, I mean, with the thirteen lots on four point three seven, these are going to be wonderful, single family homes in this area. It's a great infill project.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I was just going to also add, I I think that it sounds like this property has had a lot of different hands on it, and I think it'll be a really relief to the residents, probably once it's complete. It is, seems an appropriate infill project, and I know on Curtis, it'll be some much needed streetscape improvements too. So I know we're all eager to see it go come through, and I'm looking forward to the finished product.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out if I maybe have a recommendation for the first condition. One of the things that I don't want to have happen is I don't want to have construction on this development slowed down any further. And I want to make sure that it gets across the finish line. And sometimes when you're doing the sidewalks and you're doing stuff with A C H D, there's another level of bureaucracy that you sort of have to wait for to potentially get something done. And so I don't want a holdup. And so do you, can you state the language one more time that you used? I think you said prioritize? Or did you say that this has to be completed before any other construction begins on the property? Do you have your wording?
I do. The, so the, my language was the roadway and landscape improvements on Curtis Road, Road and Boone roadway as provided in the report be prioritized before commencing any additional work on the project. And the reason why that's being addressed is because those homeowners were, had a partial build of sidewalks in front of their homes for months. It it caused a lot of bad feelings, and it was just it it was a safety hazard for them, and I just want to make sure they're being taken care of. I'm definitely open to suggestions to say that to maybe just sort of before is to make this a priority.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just to take a stab at a suggestion here, because I'm having a hard time kind of throwing conditions on that would prevent any other additional work to being able to build homes. And I think perhaps getting priority could include having completion of the sidewalk before occupancy of of these homes, you know, before certificate occupancy or whatever that that we would do could perhaps get things moving along, but also not delay other groundwork and.
Madam Mayor, I jump in. I support the motion with the conditions that Councilmember member Corliss added on. It sounds like the stop and go of this project a couple of times has created a real hardship for the existing homes that are impacted by this. And I think to say before occupancy, we know that we're at least already two more years, two or more years into this project, and there's no occupancy. And so I can, I support that effort of being that portion of sidewalk completed first. I don't, I guess I don't see that as too much task. They'll be incentivized to work on that first and get it done. I would hate to see another, I mean, especially with current market market conditions, you just never know where projects are going to land right now. I would hate to see another false start and have another couple of years go by without this sidewalk completed.
All right, further discussion?
Yeah, but Madam Mayor, I can I can go along with the motion. I think that, you know, there there maybe was an opportunity to ask the developer to see if that was possible, you know, and it's hard once we've, you know, closed the meeting and gotten into deliberation to see if there is an ability or if that would potentially be detrimental to the project. And so so yes, I think I can all, you know, be happy to support the motion. I think that they have the ability to do it that that and go back and fix some mistakes that are there. And, you know, in the future, maybe if we can ask those questions, we could have that conversation with staff and the developer, you know, through the hearing and see if there's some ability or if there's a potential holdup there. Because again, I don't want A C H D to potentially be the holdup and getting a development done. But I don't know that this is going to be the the straw that breaks the camel's back on it.
Sure, but I just want to be clear that once I had a motion on the table, I couldn't open it back up to the developer. Yeah, okay. All right, Clerk?
Nash.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, that's it. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, would we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Post? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.